Join me in the pleasure of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Remember to silence your cell phones if you don't. First item is approval of the agenda. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Taylor. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Items two through five constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the August twenty ninth meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from planning and zoning is approval to set September nineteenth at four forty-five P M. September twenty-sixth at four forty-five P M. And October third at four forty-five P M. For three public hearings for the proposed zoning ordinance map amendment, which is a rezone from agricultural preservation to the agricultural estates zoning district on parcel ending in zero 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 six. Item five from human resources includes A. Approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions. B. Approval of the twenty twenty-three annual health and wellness fair. C. Approval to provide wellness screenings and continued quarterly individual health coaching to eligible Woodbury County employees. And D. Approval to provide flu shots to Woodbury County employees. Any questions on the consent agenda?
I'd move it.
Motion by Taylor, second by Beddinger. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. We are a couple of minutes ahead of our four thirty-five P M. Set time, so let's see if anyone has any committee reports on item number eleven. No committee reports? All right. Uh, can we? Can we introduce item ten? The Board of Supervisors, Mr. Nelson and Mr. Taylor. This is approval of one hundred fifty-five thousand from C I P. To have the building tuck pointed and the south doors replaced. We'll probably have to come back to this.
Sure, so. Okay, so the emergency service building in Climbing Hill is badly in need of having the building tuck pointed. We've received a couple of, uh, or we have received a competitive bid from Mid Continental for the work. So Supervisor Nelson and I met with Kenny Schmitz, Scott Mitchell at the Climbing Hill Building back in Maia this year to inspect it. It's clear the top several feet of the chimney needs to be removed as well as the entire building tuck pointed. Um, Scott also expressed concern about the condition of the two south facing doors to the building would like those replaced as well. At the time, we thought that we were looking at something along the lines of a quarter of a million dollars. We took some proactive steps in order to be able to demonstrably bat proof and take care of the roof issues. And look at removing some of that stack as well as other things. The structure of the building is good. We believe this is a building that can serve in maybe not perpetuity, but for some time to come. And with that Supervisor Nelson reached out to Mid Continental and garnered some other information from Scott Mitchell, our emergency services director. And so those are my opening comments.
Yeah, and the, and the, and the bid was very competitive. Like we said, we, we were thinking the two fifty to three hundred range. It came in almost half of that. Um, and Scott did some homework as well, asking their Mid Con is working on a project locally, reached out to those folks. They've been extremely happy with Mid Con. That's the folks that I talked to on a project north of Correctionville for a large school. That's who they used and they were extremely happy with them. And so I think anytime we can visit with local people who've used these folks and have glowing reviews and, and to come in at the price point that they have is a no brainer, so.
Scott Mitchell, Director of Woodbury County Emergency Services.
I'm gonna have to hold you there. We're at four thirty-five, so thanks for, thanks for coming up. We have people that came here to bid at exactly four thirty-five P M. On a property, we need to accommodate those people. Um, so item six, from Board Administration, is a public hearing on sale of property parcel, also known as nineteen oh eight Iowa Street. Uh, before we receive bids, the public hearing is open for anyone wishing to speak for or against the sale of the property. Is there anyone to speak for or against the sale before we receive bids?
Nineteen oh eight?
Uh, yes, this is for nineteen oh eight.
And just to be clear, this is whether or not the, the parcel should be sold or not, not bidding yet. Hearing none, Mr. Chair. I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second the motion by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. We're now open to receive bids for anyone wishing to approach the microphone with their name and address and opening bid on the address of nineteen oh eight Iowa Streets. Are there any bidders?
Just come up to the microphone.
We interest in, uh, okay, we interest in nineteen oh eight.
Say your name and your bid amount.
With the amount.
Minimum bid is three hundred and thirty-one dollars. Is that what you would like to bid?
Yeah, three hundred and, yeah, this is fine.
What is your name?
Carlos, or she's the owner to the house, so she need the interest and, and that, and that property.
So who is the one making the bid that will be responsible for paying it?
Her.
Okay, what is your name, ma'am?
Patricia Montoya.
Patricia Montoya.
And your bid is three hundred and thirty-one dollars, is that correct, the minimum bid? Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to bid on the property? Sir?
Hi, my name's Harlan Harris. I live at twelve eleven nineteenth Street.
And your bid, sir?
Four hundred.
Thank you. Is there a higher bid?
Four fifty.
Okay. Four fifty. Is there a higher bid?
Four seventy-five.
Four seventy-five for Mr. Harris.
Four ninety.
Four ninety.
Five.
Five hundred.
Five seventy-five.
Five twenty-five.
Mr. Chair, could you have him approach the mic so it's recorded?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, please approach the microphone as you're bidding, so it's recorded.
You can just stay up there. Most people just stay up there. Unless there's no one higher than five twenty-five.
Is there anyone to bid higher than five twenty-five?
Move that the property be sold to Ms. Montoya for five hundred twenty-five dollars.
Second the motion by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you very much. We are a little bit past our four thirty-seven P M. Set time. This is item six B. This is the public hearing on sale of property parcel, also known as nineteen fourteen Iowa Street. Uh, before we receive bids again, is there anyone to speak for or against the sale of the property?
Hearing none, Mr. Chair. I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second the motion by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Uh, are there any bids for this property? If so, please come forward with your name and address and your opening bid.
Harlan Harris, twelve eleven nineteenth Street, three twenty.
Thank you. Anyone else to bid on this property? Going once. Going twice.
Nineteen fourteen?
Yes. Okay, please come forward.
Yeah, this nineteen fourteen, she, she, she won it.
What is the bid amount?
Uh, three, three thirty-one? Three hundred thirty-one? I, I, is that amount?
Three hundred and twenty dollars was the minimum bid and that was already bid.
Yeah, three hundred and fifty, that's fine.
Three hundred and fifty dollars. Is there anyone higher?
Go three seventy-five.
Please again approach the microphones.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Three seventy-five.
Three seventy-five for Mr. Harris. Anything higher?
Four hundred.
Anything higher?
Move that the property be sold, uh, Patricia Montoya for four hundred dollars.
Second the motion by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you.
Who are they seeing, Miss, uh? Seeing Karen, okay.
All right, because we already started in on item ten, would the board like to continue that?
Yes, please.
Okay, please. Welcome back, Scott.
Thanks for welcoming me back. Scott Mitchell, Director of Emergency Services, Woodbury County. So with the talking with Mark and Jeremy and Kenny and what we've got into looking at it. And then with the background research I done with Mid Continental, they actually worked on a church up in Remsen that had a very large, quite a few very large stone arches in it that they rebuilt. And if you actually start looking at it and the work they did, it's pretty amazing that they were able to accomplish and make it look like it does. It matches everything else on the building. And part of this is, is they want to take the chimney down because they want to reuse the bricks. They want to take them, take it off course by course, brick by brick, and reuse them for some of the bricks that we have to replace. And I think what the fact that we found out what it's going to cost to build a new building, I think we need, the county should put a little bit of money into that old building in Mobile, or I mean in Climbing Hill and save it. And, uh, I was surprised by how cheap we, I mean, how low were priced it come in than what we thought? So, I think that Mid Continental will do a, do us a good job if we decide to do this.
Did any of you receive the quote in its entirety with photos and everything else? Okay, so I wasn't sure if that made its way into the backup, but if you look at some of the work that they're doing on the limestone mortar joints, um, inspections, one of the concerns that we had originally was that this would be a, you know, a five or ten year thing and then we'd be right back doing it all over again. What we're learning from them is that it extends the life of the building immeasurably. And just to the point, we're looking at what kind of funding are we going to have for this, you know, over one hundred year old building? That hasn't been done in I don't know how long here. And so anything that they're doing is going to be, you know, preservative, for lack of a better term, preventative. And the fact that they're matching, uh, a lot of these brick faces, that they're removing part of the stack that's been problematic. Um, a lot of the mortar and joints, I, they're giving Supervisor Nelson, who talked to him directly, much longer assurances as far as what you do now, um, won't have to be just done because it hasn't been done for so long anyway. And so I think that this would go a long way. Um, I think it's fiscally responsible. Um, and we've really tried to pinpoint what needs to be done versus the wants, so.
Yeah, and I say we did have the bat, uh, termination done. That's been holding up very well. The roof's coming along. They were actually there again today working on it. They're kind of piecing that in when they can. I mean, it's, it's, we have the flooring yet to get laid and the stack kept to go on. It finished the roof, but it's all coming along pretty good. And I'm very impressed with, uh, how the bat mitigation went. They did a very good job cleaning it up. I don't have a problem going up there because I don't like bats at all, but it's very clean and it's, yeah. They did a very good job.
And part of this too is for the two south facing doors, one that you guys use every day, coming and going in and out of your office. And then one is, is on the stairwell on the other side. It doesn't get used very often, but it, it looks unsightly. It's not very secure. It's degrading and so it'll be nice to have both doors done. Everything will be secure. It'll be sealed much better. And it's kind of no brainer to do this while we're in doing this other work.
True. Yeah, the front doors, the south facing door, I mean, you guys have probably seen even out to the rust coming out of it. The other one is the west facing door down into the, the ramp down into portable comm center in the boiler room. And that's an old, uh, steel wooden door that just, it doesn't ever get used, but it, it's, it's to its point of being replaced, yes. And I, go ahead.
No, you go.
Idea was replace them with two steel doors, just like what's in the front door.
I guess the other thing is we're constantly, uh, beholden and responsible to taxpayer dollars. Um, this is, uh, really money that's been freed up from C I P. That was originally purposed for, uh, potentially an, an add-on, um, at the L E C site. And so when we, uh, sent a signal that we were going to claw that back, for lack of a better term, um, there is money in capital improvement projects that will hold the taxpayer harmless to the, to, you know, the hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. I think it's a good investment. And so with that, I would, I would move to approve a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from C I P to have the emergency services building tuck pointed and the south doors replaced.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Nelson.
I have a question on the doors then. Is there a bid for that from a separate company or are there quotes from? No, when I looked into them, Keith, kind of, you know, earlier, I didn't really get bids, but I kind of looked online what they would cost, you know, and, uh, to be put in. So I really haven't because I didn't do that last week, call, uh, Pekins or anyplace like that for a steel door. But that's who we'd be going through, yes. So we kind of estimated what it was off of what I'd found, what it would take to replace them. So security wise, you want a steel door rather than like aluminum frame or anything? Yes, yes. I guess so. When I, I looked at the bid here, I do kind of get slightly challenged by the fact that it's about twelve hundred dollars off the minimum bid threshold before you got to put something out to bid. And so is there any stipulation that, uh, there will be no additional change orders, no additional expenses?
I don't think there can be except for coming back to this board, um, based on this is the ceiling amount.
Because at, you know, any twelve hundred dollar expense, which could easily come up in a project that size, I don't think we can legally accept anything or go forward with it.
Is it, is that one fifty-five?
One forty-five is the minimum bid threshold for projects for counties according to dollars. I guess I didn't look through Iowa code and dig it in.
So they, um, they do adjust that number from time to time, the, and they made an adjustment in twenty-three. It's a hundred and ninety-six thousand. That's applied to counties where you have to go through the formal bidding process. Anytime a project is over a hundred and forty-five thousand, you have to do competitive quotes, which would be obtaining a quote from at least two entities prior to, uh, awarding it.
I, I guess personally I would feel still more comfortable to get a second quote before you. I did contact the company that did it before and they come looked at it, but I have not received anything from them back.
So just to make sure I understand our, our guidance on this one, the hundred and fifty-five exceeds the one forty-five. And so I see that look in your eye, like maybe we should have another bid or two. Is that correct? Or, and if so, the fact that we're kind of divulging one tonight, where do we go from here?
Well, that's the challenge. So like in, if you read the guy's quote for the tuck pointing, the quote is one forty-three, seven ninety-four. That's for that portion. You're hiring somebody else to do the doors. So the total project costs, it's separate projects, right? But the total project cost is the one forty-three, seven ninety-four. I don't know. I guess that's, to me, where maybe you get more than one quote at that point. Even though in my experience with tuck pointing in the past, that's actually a very, very competitive call. Yeah, and that's a very, uh, small market of people that do that work too. I don't think we actually have any in our area that I, that I know of. I mean, I didn't know about Midwest Continental, but they're, but they're up in South Dakota, but I'll contact that. If you want, I'll contact other company tomorrow and see, you know, where they're at, but I haven't. And I told them, you know, ASAP on it so that we could have two, and I haven't heard anything back from them at all. Well, to give you an example, we had a company give us a quote on the north end of our building where the Skywalk is at Home Furniture. And you're maybe talking like fifty foot stretch of wall, and I think they wanted like three hundred grand for it. Obviously, we didn't do it, you know, it was just way too much for a small area.
And I guess to your point, Keith, which I think is a good point, um, I would say because we are under the one forty-five and it's not like this is subbed out for a, you know, total of one fifty-five. I feel comfortable underneath as long as we've been told by Scott that he's tried to procure a couple of other quotes and it's as competitive as that is. I feel comfortable moving forward tonight knowing if they came back and said, I'm going to need another twenty-five thousand, we would have to say, you know what, we're going to have to probably have this bid out then because that's going to exceed, am I, I don't want to practice without a.
Without a license?
Right.
It is a little bit of a gray area as far as what process, um, when there's a question as to whether the threshold is met and if it's, you know, obviously ahead of time, you have an estimate and, and where the bids actually come in. Could be above or below that. So if I'm asked ahead of time, um, about probably a best practices sort of thing, um, I think if, if we have an estimate that something's going to be close to, um, that bidding threshold, um, even if the bids ultimately come in under, my recommendation would be to use that process that's set out in the code. To, just to be on the safe side. In this particular instance, I wasn't consulted until now and, and, and that number is kind of, is out of the bag essentially as far as the, uh,
The one forty-three.
Right, and sitting here listening to it, it does sound like they really are distinct projects. I mean, they only, it's the same building, but they're, they're two different things. And you don't really have a hard number on the door at this time, is my understanding. So I think it's, it's up to the board at this point. If you wanted to go ahead and award, um, the tuck pointing as that's under the, uh, the threshold for the competitive quote, it, it wouldn't be required. Um, I think you, you'll run into some issues potentially if, if there is a change order that would put it above that amount. So they need to know that it's, you know, you can't go above what this bid is.
Well, maybe bifurcate the motion. Who made the motion, was it? So maybe amend the motion to have the one forty-three, what was it, seven twenty? What was the amount?
One forty-three, seven ninety-four.
One forty-three, seven ninety-four allocated for the tuck pointing. And then, uh, move like another, what is it, twelve thousand then for doors from another.
I'm fine with that and I did consult, just so you know, I, I never want our building services director to ever feel like he's cut out of anything. I know he's busy with a lot of other things going on, so he has reviewed this as well, but I think that's something that would be good if we're communicative to him in terms, and, and you as well, Scott, and carrying that message back. If it's anticipated by any, any means to exceed that, um, it can't.
No, I, I will inform Craig of that straight up and I tell him he can watch the board and we need to see the discussion on it, to see why it's that way. And so he better understands it too, but that's, yeah, I don't have a problem. I mean, that, it is what it is, so. But I'll sure let Craig know that. Yeah, and the work wouldn't get done till next year, in twenty-four.
Because, Keith, I had to use the word bifurcate, I will amend the motion to be one forty-three, seven ninety-four, uh, for the tuck pointing. And then we could pass the other one separately, if that makes, does that sound?
Yeah, when I hear that it's, the work's not actually going to be done till next year, that gives me a little bit of pause and that maybe we could put the brakes on and, and actually obtain the second quote.
Is it, is it problematic at all having the first one out? Is somebody going to say, well, of course, the other one came in at one forty-three, seven ninety-three instead of seven ninety-four?
When it comes to the.
Or is it all re, redone in the process then?
When it comes to the competitive quote, um, there's not a process set out in the code as far as how we open them or, um, the timeline of that. I mean, ideally, um, only we would know that number. Initially, but I, the code itself doesn't require that we do it any specific way. It's just that we have a, a good faith effort to get quotes from at least two contractors. So it's not ideal, but I, I think you, you could, uh, potentially try to get that second quote. I mean, it sounds like you.
Well.
Talked to somebody.
I did, but see, here's the thing, you know, like this quote, you see all read it, it's good for thirty days. So, you know, saying that, so the other guy, nah, today reads that and says, well, shoot, I'll put it in in thirty-one days. My quote, because the original one's no good. No matter what it is, you know.
Thirty days from when?
Eighteenth of August. Well, my experience is most people. And they probably would extend it, but I'm just going by what a document does say. I mean, I can contact them tomorrow and see if they're still, you know, but I haven't heard nothing, crickets out of them, so. I kind of take that as, I'm not going to give you a number, but I can give them a call tomorrow morning too.
How about right now?
Probably a little too late. I bet they're not there.
I think for me, you know, we talked about Kenny Schmitz and Kenny looked over this too, and I asked him about it. And his exact words were Mid Con are the best of the best. And, and I think when you talk to people locally that have used them on projects much larger than ours and they had the same feedback and glowing reviews that Kenny had in his line of work, I, I think that we're reasonably safe and I, I don't think that there's any, nobody's trying to, to work around the system here being under this one forty-five, you know, but, um, that's, you know.
Yeah, that's the number you, I mean, you obviously have to give us, but the workmanship they do, if you go out and look at that church in Remsen, that's, and look at the arches and Art Craig told me it's what's, what's they did, that's pretty, that's pretty amazing. I, I'll have to admit that that's, and to make them look like the other ones and everything else on that building and, and turn out as good as they have, that is, they do really good work. That church up there shows it. They did work down here on Fourth Street, but I can't remember off the top of my head now what building it was. But they did do a bunch of work on historic Fourth Street also.
The quote is good through the eighteenth. Is that correct? So could you ask them if they could extend that another month or so? And if the answer is no, we still have a week to come back and take this action with the quote that's been given? Joshua, is that preferable?
Well, how long do you need to, what's the process in terms of we're putting this out for, for bid? You have this many days to respond. What's that look like? Could we say we're going to email five different entities within a hundred and twenty mile radius? Because I know this isn't something that everybody does, um, and see if we get anything back in, is it fourteen days, twenty-one days? What's reasonable and?
The touchstone is that we make a good faith effort to get quotations from at least two contractors. And then we're supposed to designate the time and manner of filing those, uh, quotations. Um, I think if we were going to go about it that way, we would probably ask this contractor to submit a new quotation at that same, um, time as anybody else that we work, so. We were kind of here after the fact talking about how, how we could make it happen, but, um, it, it's not ideal in that sense, but ultimately, I, I mean, I stand by what I said earlier as far as we're under the amount. And as long as the project doesn't go over that amount technically under the code, it's not required to, to use the competitive quote process.
Then I stand by my motion.
I still second that motion.
Got the motion.
Can you repeat it, please?
The motion would be to allocate a hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars for tuck pointing to Mid-Continental at the Emergency Services Building. I'll have a follow-on motion later.
Thank you.
Motion by Taylor, second by Nelson of the same. Any other discussion?
You know, I guess as a board decision, I'm fine with passing it, personally, I'm gonna vote no, just because to me it's close to it and, and it's nothing, I'm, I'm not trying to insult you or the contractor's bid or anything.
I understand.
So just please don't take it that way, but.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Passes four, one, Raddick opposed. Is there another motion?
You forget the number?
I did.
Yeah.
Was it eleven, two, twenty-six, was it?
Yeah.
Eleven oh six, yeah, eleven, two oh six.
Eleven, two oh six. Is what I have as well.
I move we allocate eleven thousand, two hundred and six dollars from CIP to replace the, uh, two of the doors at the Climbing Hill Emergency Services Building.
Second.
Motion by Nelson, second by Taylor, any discussion on this motion?
That's an up two.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Up two.
There is no further discussion, all's in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay, passes five, zero. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We'll now return back to item number seven. This is from the Board of Supervisors, myself and Mr. Raddick. This is two motions summarized as approval of replacement of Rocky DeWitt with Mark Nelson as the county commissioners, as the county's commissioner appointed to the Law Enforcement Center Authority. First motion would be to remove and the second motion would be to appoint by resolution. As everyone's well aware, last week, approximately two weeks out from the last publicly stated date of substantial completion for the project, the county board requested a public update from the LEC Authority, the contractor, Goldberg, the architect and the project manager. Unfortunately, the meeting was not attended by those entities and unfortunately, I believe the silence spoke volumes. And it prompted some discussion amongst, amongst this board as was noted in the item in regards to the county's appointee on the authority. At the time, Mr. Raddick put forward the idea that we replace and we had some discussion, Mr. Nelson at the time was agreeable to that. And so that is why this is put forward. Both Mr. Raddick and I have, have served with Mr. DeWitt and this recommendation is not a criticism of his service, but reflects the county board's increasing need to be more informed through a sitting supervisor. Especially as there's discussions of items of illegal nature which have not been publicly acknowledged, I believe, by the authority themselves. And so there are some unknowns that we have as a board. Background of this is that Woodbury County moved swiftly on January tenth to reappoint DeWitt to the authority. Is prompted by his resignation from the board when he won his state legislature seat and is required by the prior resolution appointing him and this was in or, in order to leverage his institutional knowledge of the project. Since then, Supervisor Mark Nelson has been attending as county liaison, but for that reason has not been allowed in several closed sessions. I personally just wanna say I appreciate Mr. DeWitt for sticking around on the project, on the authority and I also appreciate Mr. Nelson for attending as a liaison, a non-voting liaison. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Raddick at this point, but that's the introduction to the item.
Well, and I think from the get-go, you know, we, we wanted Rocky to serve as Mark got on the board, got accustomed to, you know, serving as a supervisor and being a liaison. And the intention was to always put him on as the county's representative at some point. You know, I think we kind of preferred when the building was open, but we're almost there to the date it was supposed to be and I think it's just, again, no reflection on Rocky or his service, we do appreciate what he's done and served well with us as a supervisor and on the LEC. It's just, I think. We're accountable to the public as well and, you know, that seat is, I think, intended by I O Code to be somebody from this board, so it's just a matter of taking that step now after nine months.
And as everyone's hopefully already aware, Mr. Nelson on the board is the only one that, that we can appoint based on the code and living outside of Sioux City and that was the case in the past as well. Any comment from other board members?
Did you wanna say anything on it or anything? Okay. Yeah, I'll go ahead and move item seventy.
Motion by Raddick, second by Young. Any further discussion before we invite Mr. DeWitt up? Please.
Rocky DeWitt, Law Enforcement Center Authority Treasurer. So what exactly is the reason for the desire to replace me on the authority? What is the reason?
I think it reflects the county board's increasing need to be more informed through a sitting supervisor as we stated and as we stated last week.
Is that a legal reason? I'm asking, I.
What do you mean by?
Is that a legal reason for removing a commissioner on the board?
Uh, that's a question perhaps for Mr. Widman, is it legal to do so?
Well, if you're getting at whether there has to be some cause identified. The supervising documents of authority don't specify that any cause has to be identified by the appointing body, just that a member can be removed by a vote of two-thirds majority of the appointing body.
Okay, then do I get the opportunity to ask a few more questions?
Sure.
Can I get your reason or reasons in writing?
I believe they are in the agenda item.
Can I get a letter from the board that states clearly your intention on why you want to replace this commissioner?
I don't see why not.
And how soon can I expect that?
Why is that needed, may I ask?
I think I deserve it, for one thing.
Would a letter supply any more information than has been discussed last week and this week and through the item?
Well, I, personally, I think the reason for replacing me is you're not getting information that you think you need. And I would just like to see it in writing, okay? So my next question is, so I, I got that, that's a yes, that I'll get something in writing, correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there a plan to replace the rest of the commission?
Not to my knowledge.
And why not? I'm not the only one that isn't answering your questions at the moment and I have more to add here.
Mr. Taylor?
But my understanding and, and Joshua can correct me if I'm wrong, is the city council is the one that appoints the one member, which would be City Councilman Dan Moore. So I don't know, even if theoretically there was a desire by this board to replace Dan Moore, I'm not saying there is, but I'm just saying theoretically, I don't know that it would be within our, our purview to be able to do so. So that would just be a factual, and then my understanding is it would take four-fifths or a majority of the county board and the city board to replace the resident at large. So.
Okay, then my next question is, isn't a commission to be considered independent?
Well, and it is independent and that's, I think.
Then how is it independent when you're removing someone you don't like their, what they do or say? How is that independent?
That's not, that has nothing to do with it.
I disagree.
Well, I think, you know, the statements I said.
Is that a yes or no, Keith? Because I'm asking, isn't a commission to be considered independent?
It is independent.
Then why are you so apt to want to replace a member?
Because we have somebody that's a sitting member of the Board of Supervisors, not just for our clarity, but, but public's clarity as far as a member on the LEC as our appointee. It comes from us, you know, and it's a member of the board that, you know, at least we see, you know, him every week have the opportunity to ask at citizen concerns or committee meetings for any input on our agenda.
Then would it be prudent to begin replacing members of other commissions, conservation, civil service, simply because you don't like what they say or do?
Again, Rocky, it has nothing to say with what you said or done.
Then I guess I'm not understanding the answer. Because as I understand it, a commission is to be considered independent. And this as an odor of taking your ball and going home.
I, I think you're taking it the wrong way.
We, the authority, have held closed sessions for a reason and we all know that info cannot be repeated. We have been given very limited info in these closed sessions. So to repeat that limited info would or could be disastrous as the meetings held under the section of code of pending or potential litigation. Any leaked info would easily be misinterpreted, repeated in error or simply extrapolated to something that has extremely high potential for damage to parties involved. It would be very premature to start replacing authority members.
Can I ask a question of you, Rocky, and maybe of you, Joshua? It's been said that what you guys have discussed, closed session, that you cannot share with anyone outside of that closed session.
Advised by legal counsel to not share it, due to the fact that we have such limited information to start with.
Okay, so I guess Joshua, this is for you. If hypothetically I take his seat and I'm in the closed session and I'm given, I'm privy to that type of information, would I not be able to share it with this body even within a closed session then? Because.
So if you're asking whether the same confidentiality requirements or recommendations would apply to you sitting in that seat, and I, I would assume that the, you would have the same recommendation from their legal counsel that they're giving Rocky sitting in that seat at this time.
Correct.
The challenge is that as a three-person group, there's a representative appointed by us, so it's also to communicate, I would say, even closed session items with us as a board.
And I agree, Keith, but my question, you know, for Rocky and Josh is, is if their attorney is saying that they cannot share that, if he can't share it and if they say that I can't share it, then what are we necessarily gain? And that's why I don't know if.
I think that. We could have a conversation between you and their legal counsel and potentially our office as far as protecting that information, whatever it could be and to what extent there are things that could be shared. So, I mean, I, I think it's, it's pretty rare that you have a closed session where literally nothing can be said, whether even if. Even if you defer on the matter because of pending litigation, I mean, there's, there's usually some bit of information, basic facts and circumstances that can be shared, so I, again, I don't know the specific things that are going on with the authority, but I think at some point there could be a conversation about, here's what can safely be shared.
And the, the point being made by the questions is well-taken as far as public comment, but it's more than that, isn't it? If you know what's being discussed and it involves something of finances, which it's very likely to involve in a sixty-nine million dollar project, would it help to have such a person on the board during the January budget season? And that's a rhetorical question, any of you can answer.
I mean, I, I think the biggest thing is we need more information. I mean, we, right now.
And so does the authority, by the way.
Right, but I think the public that calls us and says, is this September fourteenth, are you opening? November fourteenth, we have twenty employees. What are we doing with twenty employees in a two-hundred-and-thirty-four by jail? You know, we've had a moratorium on vacation, we, we're just, we're desperate for information. And we understand the, the, you know, not being able to share what's in closed session, but what I've heard from people is there's more that can be shared that seems lower level that's not going to endanger a lawsuit. I mean.
The legal counsel for the authority would not agree with your statement.
They, they may not, but we're beholden to, to taxpayers and to these twenty employees.
As is the authority, Jeremy.
I, I understand that, but I think that the desperation is, you know, we have no information and right now, I think we're wanting more information and if we could have more, we need it. I'm just, I understand there are certain things from a legal strategy standpoint, I, I get that. But not having any idea of, we don't know if it's three months, six months, nine months.
And neither does the authority.
So a media member told me that the authority chair said two and a half months on radio. I said, that's news to us because we don't get that information, we don't, we have no idea when this is gonna be complete, we have no idea what the budget for revenue. So I just think it's, we just, we need, we can't not have information. And I know we can't go out there, I know not all the authority members even been out there. I think the public is demanding information and say, we're trying to do everything we can.
I think the authority is. I, again, because of this, because of the code section, we went under closed session. It, it's just very difficult to, to give answers when we don't have the information in front of us yet. And it's, it's frustrating for the authority and obviously for the public and I'm part of the public. I would like to see it through to completion, I'm. Fact of the matter is, if you remove me from this commission, I'll probably sleep better. But. It's a, it's a delicate situation right now.
So I, I think that we're, we're in an interesting time. And I think we have a lot of questions, mostly for Ron, not, not so much for you, for, for Dan. But I think that it is distinctly possible that you guys could not have some information that we think you have and that we could be asking too much, but I also think that Ron has not reciprocated as much information as he could have to us. You know, we've got questions about the FFNE that's on here tonight and the building services building, what, you know, what's going on with that, so I, I do think that there are some things that Ron could be doing a better job. But I also know that he's been working about a seven-day-a-week job on this thing as well. And I've been in that position where you're doing a lot of work that nobody sees it behind the scenes and everybody wants to throw stones and they don't know what, what, what's going on. So I, I do have, I, I do appreciate that about it. But I, I just, I just wanna be careful that we're not throwing you out thinking that we're gonna have amazing access to information because I'm in your spot, when a lot of this really has to come from Ron and I can't replace Ron. So that would be my only comment.
I just want to make a comment publicly that I think every member of the LEC authority should have the same information as everyone else. I, I just, and I'm going to say that again, I think every member of the LEC authority, all three, should have the same information as everyone else. That one person shouldn't have more, just making a, a general statement that I believe that that should be the case.
And that's what makes it near impossible to speak outside of meetings. You know, because there's, there is only three of us. Obviously, two of us would make a, a quorum.
Right.
And it's, and I've gotten word that one thing that Chairman Wick does have a problem with is the fact that we can't discuss with each other legally. And that's frustrating.
And I just want to, sorry.
No, I was just going to say it would have, in, in a fashion, it probably would have been nice, more comfortable, if you will, that we did have a five-person panel, but I don't know that, I mean, I know there's county boards, there's other things that have three members, and I know that in speaking with them individually in, in different counties, they have a difficult time talking. So basically in our closed sessions and/or open meetings, is the only time we can legally speak. And that is, that ties our hands, so.
And, you know, realizing that the, the first thing I did was see if we could increase the number so we could add, we could have both, but unfortunately, I'm not sure the code, as I said last week, contemplates a project of this size with a three-member commission or authority, but it does. So those are the guide rails we have to work with and the date, you know, the date of substantial completion was sort of the, the line here. When we, you know, reappointed you, we, we changed the resolution to allow it. Because it was originally stating you had to be on the board, so we went out of our way to make sure that that would happen. We had to have a sort of an end date in mind to transition to Mr. Nelson. But as the date is blurred, it's not so much an issue of it's being pushed back a month or two months. It's this issue of, is this going to be a protracted legal issue where the board is going to have to perhaps budget something in relation to that? And, you know, with that line being blurred, it's just hard to, you know, especially when we're up against, I could, I don't think there'd be much difference between April to, you know, to the hypothetical opening date. But I mean, we're approaching budget time and it's a, it's a challenging time to not have that transition take place, in my opinion.
Do not disagree, but I would reiterate that again, any leaked info would or could easily be misinterpreted or simply extrapolated to something that could be dangerous to all the parties. And I would urge extreme caution and judicious thought on, nothing against any member on the board, and I do understand that Mark is the only one that could probably do it, you know, living outside of the city limits, but I, we'll say nothing more than I urge extreme caution and.
And I understand. Someone has probably been talking because last week we as a board discussed different dates we've heard from different sources and it could all be speculation, but it is concerning that dates are being mentioned around courthouse employees and, and being relayed to us, and that's not coming from us for sure.
Well, and I'm not saying it is, Matthew, I'm just saying that ethically speaking, that we're, we're treading a very fine line here and, and I have not heard anything outside of our meetings, but ethics is important to us on the commission, so I would urge, urge discretion.
And again, you know, I'm just going back to what Matthew and I said upfront, is that this is not a reflection on you or the job you've done. It's just to have somebody that is a direct representative of the board that's now sits on the board. And we had talked about it back in January when we changed the resolution to go till September fifteenth originally. It's September fifth, it's almost there. I mean, it's, and I, I know your desire to be on there till the completion. But I mean, in my mind, you know, you could still go to all the meetings, it's just that the difference is that when it's a closed session, then it's Mark in there and not you, you know, and, you know. That's, I feel like that's more the board's position than.
Right now, from where I'm standing, outside the board, I see more benefit to keeping me on the commission. But that's just me. And I'm not, I don't know if you, if you take me off the board, I don't know how I'll get by without all that extra income. So.
And I guess for anybody watching, the millions of viewers on our YouTube channel, the LEC authority is not paid for their work and their service. And, you know, for our chairman, Ron Wick, as much time as he has been putting in there in a difficult time, I know he lost his wife recently. You know, the, the challenges that life brings are not always easy on a person and for what he's been putting in, the amount of hours, you know, again, I, I publicly want to be very sincere in thanking him for, for doing that. And again, it's a, it's a tough position, you know, publicly, I don't know of any, you know, authorities other in the state right now that are operating and doing what we're doing, especially, nothing's ever been done to the scale in the history of the state. Especially in a time as this, where you start a project and go through the bidding process and COVID hits and rapid inflation and it's definitely been a challenge. But from where we sit and the, you know, the feedback, the criticism, as far as how the authority was originally intended and laid out, one member of the city council, one member of the board of supervisors, one member of the public, and we're the only ones that technically doesn't have its own current member. And again, it's not a reflection of you, you know, you've, you are serving in the state legislature now instead of here. You know, we all supported you in that as well. And I think it's just, it's kind of hit that point where it's time to make this change. And, you know, I hate to do that to the LEC authority at the same time, but we're representing us.
So I guess my question would still remain though, and one thing that doesn't sound like we understand, and, and maybe we would need to talk with you guys' representation on this, but if I am put on there, if I still cannot come back and speak to you guys about the closed session, what do we, what are we gaining?
Using discernment and discretion is going to be the call and the charge if the board so puts you on to be able to sift through, this is what I've been told not to say, and this is what would be prudent that I could say. And we're gonna, I think if the board so chooses, would trust that you would make that decision and be able to bifurcate what you can and can't share.
Yeah, and I've got no, I'm not going to leak anything that I'm not supposed to. I, I don't worry about me as much. I just don't want you guys to have these expectations that I'm going to take his spot, I'm going to go to these closed sessions, I'm going to come back here with glowing reports to fill you in, when that may not be the case. And I may be completely wrong. I may come back with oodles of information that I can share with you guys in a closed sessions format or whatever. I just don't want that expectation to be that, that the flow of information is, is going to suddenly change with me being there because it may not. You know, I'm not sure.
Yeah, and I would just also add, and Joshua can correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm sure I would have more pull in public meetings.
Right, but you have more than one legal counsel too.
That's correct.
So as a board of supervisor, as a supervisor with the county attorney's office on what should or should not be said, and then with the authorities and, you know, I think Rocky was in the same position at one point. Maybe you weren't having closed sessions, but you were a supervisor and an authority member. And to know, I'll just give you one scenario if I can. If at some point the authority said that they were standing for damages based on a loss of revenue and was in negotiations with whoever it is, and said, well, we'll accept fifty or sixty percent. Well, whose loss revenue is that? It's the county's. It's county taxpayers. And so to be able to make that decision on behalf of Woodbury County, something that say, well, that money is owed to us, as a supervisor, we'd expect you, I would hope, to say, wait a second. You know, they budgeted this and, and I can't, I can at least be that voice. It's just a thought. None of this is neat or clean or easy, but.
So I guess in, to answer your question on that, serving on quite a few boards, commissions, Simcoe, SERTS, SEDC, you name the boards and commissions you can sit on too, but I've had closed sessions with some of those. And obviously, you know, a real high-profile one we had in the past was our mental health board. And, you know, I think we've said things in the past that there's concerns over this. If you would like details though, it's, it's closed session, so. It's, you can have a one-on-one conversation legally with the board of supervisor, not a one-on-two, you know, not, maybe a public discussion here on the front with a microphone on. But that's, that's about the only, only way. Because again, you're a board representative, just like I'm a board representative on Simcoe. So if, you know, we had an issue at county conservation, then that's you, right?
Yep.
So that would be something where, you know, one-on-one, you could tell me what's going on. Because we're members of the same board, even you're the representative on that.
It also involves the legitimacy of any closed sessions from the board of supervisors. If there are damages and the county is involved, we certainly need to know exactly when those sessions can take place. And I believe it's challenging for our own boards council to a green light or a red light or yellow light, a, a closed session if there's less information on, on anything related that can be relayed to our, our board's legal counsel. So, you know, to me, it's, it's even more important to have that communication than simply with another supervisor. Anything, Mr. Guttinger?
No.
Any other discussion from the board?
When can I expect that letter?
In a week.
Thank you.
Doyle Turner, twenty-seven thirty-eight two hundred street. I, I don't think you're, from what I'm hearing, I don't think your problem is really with board members. It sounds to me like you have an attorney on the LEC that has gone way beyond his scope. My understanding is that Mr. DeWitt, Senator DeWitt, would be a, an agent for the board on that LEC. And the attorney on the LEC, in my opinion, I might not say this quite right, is, is committing tortious interference with a contract. That attorney does not have the authority or the legal ability to tell an agent what he can tell or not tell the people he is an agent for. So if I was, to be perfectly honest, if I was Mr. Nelson, I would not take this position because he's walking into the exact same situation that Rocky DeWitt is in. As far as I'm concerned, there is no legal responsibility of that attorney to tell your agent what he can and not cannot tell you in a closed session. So my opinion is you don't need to change, changing this isn't going to do anything. Your real battle is with an attorney who is way out of his scope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Almost any attorney I know though is usually on the pendulum side that's very cautious, so.
Hi, my name is Felicia Hilton. I'm with North Central State's Regional Council of Carpenters. And I understand Rocky's, Mr. DeWitt's being upset about being removed from the board, but I do believe that that advice is just advice. Your county attorney gave you guys advice on a bid prior and said you should submit two bids just to be in line with the code. And he gave that advice to you guys and you decided not to accept that advice. It's the same thing with the LEC. They can either take it or not. He told you, submit two bids because the bid is too close and that the code requires that you seek a second bid, and you guys decided to not seek a second bid. And your county attorney was sitting right here and he gave you that legal advice. So all of this that the LEC can't come and report to you is ridiculous, honestly. The whole point of it is, when the bid went out for the jail, it is a responsive, responsible bidder. And you are seeing that you are not getting a responsive, responsible contractor, LEC, or anyone else. They are not responsive and responsible to the board or to the public. And that's the real problem. And so I want to commend you for wanting to try and address that by putting Mr. Nelson on the board. But you should go on the board knowing that is just advice. There is nothing binding you to being able to communicate with the supervisors what's going on with the jail. It's the public's money, it's the federal government's money, it's everybody that lives in this county's money. And to see Baker and to see Housman and the LEC authority not be responsible and to listen to Mr. DeWitt BS about why he can't come and tell you guys about the jail as if it's some kind of, you know, scary, risky thing, it's not. You guys are the people's voice in the county. You've been elected. It's their money. You chose to spend it this way. And now we don't know anything about what's going on. So I'm not buying what he's saying at all. Your county attorney gave you very sound legal advice on that bid prospect, by the way. I just want to say, commend you, Mr. Whitman, for telling them the exact truth about bidding that way. Even though they bifurcated it and split it, a year from now, that's going to cost more money. So it should just have been rebid, which is what he said, but you didn't take that advice. So I think it's the same thing for the LEC. It's a bunch of smoke and mirrors. I don't know why they're shutting out the county. I have no idea why. It makes no sense. I am the political director for the state of Iowa with the carpenters, and I go and speak to counties, county supervisors constantly. I've never seen anything like this. As a matter of fact, if this was Polk County, they would have already pulled that. Straight, I don't think they would put up with it at all. And I am, I don't really know what to say, why you guys are tolerating it from the LEC. And I absolutely would replace every last one of them on that board for not responding to you. Not only has it been a challenge, because we've been on your butts, like, I, I know we have. I know Ernie has, because this project is really important to us. We worked to help pass it. And, you know, you guys got rid of the quality assurance questionnaire that vets contractors as if that's some bad thing because we thought the bids should have been rebid at the time because they were both really high. But the response, in my opinion, was really petty towards the carpenters. But to see the response that these guys have not, watching the public hearing last week, seeing the sheriffs, seeing the courts come and talk to you guys about the importance of knowing this date and why fiscally it's important, the federal contract and the money that can be lost, and the whole budget itself, and not knowing when the jail is going to be open, is absolutely not being responsive or responsible. And for Mr. DeWitt to try and act as if, serving on this board, being one of the main actors to attack the carpenters because of what we were saying, and to sit here and try and justify not communicating with his fellow former board members is absolutely unacceptable. It's the public's money, it'll be the public's jail, the, the courts, as well as the sheriffs are public servants. And they absolutely deserve. The, the courts, as well as the sheriffs are public servants and they absolutely deserve it. That's why we supported it, for the safety of the, the officers and the sheriffs that work there. That's why we supported it, for their safety, to get them out of that building, not just the prisoners, but for them. And to see that they're in this lurch and your response is to put Mr. Nelson on and he has a meltdown about it and they still haven't come and talked to you, Baker still hasn't come. No one is saying that they have to come here and speak at this mic, but they can't call Mr. Ung, they can't call you, they can't say personally what's going on with the jail. It's absolutely unacceptable and it would be my advice to get rid of every last one of them, every last one of them, for not being accountable to you. Because guess what? The voters will hold you accountable. If that whole thing turns into the hot mess expressed that it already is, the voters will hold you accountable. Will work to do that. Right now, we're just watching. We're just watching. And I have a stack of change orders that's as big as a phone book right now. And it's counting and going and going. So it's already over seventy million dollars, already. And they don't think they have to come and tell you something when they're spending money like it's theirs? No, it's the county's money that they're spending and they know it. And so there's no excuse, none whatsoever, why they have not come and told you guys, whether it's one-on-one or personally, what's going on with that jail and talk to the sheriffs, talk to the courts, so that real business can function as normal. This is not normal and it shouldn't be accepted as normal. So, Mr. Nelson, congratulations. I hope the board does the right thing and puts you on there. And I hope you do the right thing and tell the attorney, I'll talk to my county attorney and get advice, cause yours has been terrible. It got Rocky kicked off the board. Thank you.
Is the board ready to vote? Uh, the motion on the table requires a two-thirds majority, which is four out of five votes. I'd like to request a roll call.
Bittenger?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Raddick?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Ung?
Aye. And the motion passes five to zero to remove Rocky DeWitt as Woodbury County's appointee to the L E C authority. Item B requires a simple majority. This is approval of the resolution, your packet appointing Woodbury County Supervisor Mark Nelson as Woodbury County's appointee to the L E C authority of note. Um, I added back into the, uh, resolution, the requirement that he be a board member. So if that ceases to be the case, we'll have to revisit this. Um, I will make that motion.
Second.
Second by Raddick. Any discussion? And for the good of the public, this is, uh, as noted in the resolution, for the remainder of the current term ending into December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven, the three seats are staggered. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Is that, as a resolution, I still think it requires a roll call. And I know we haven't been doing that, but I think what I've checked in code is resolutions typically require a roll call.
Parlamentary advice?
I'd ask for a roll call vote, just err on the side of caution, if that's okay with you.
That will be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Bittenger?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Raddick?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Ung?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero by roll call vote. Thank you. Moving on to item eight from Board Administration, Dennis Butler, this includes A. This is approval to reduce the ARPA standard allowance to the new law enforcement center from ten million dollars to nine million fifty-nine thousand dollars, which is accounting for the previous F Y twenty-three C I P transfer of nine hundred forty-one thousand dollars, which is funding for furniture, fixtures and equipment.
Okay, back on January, back on January eighteenth of twenty-twenty-two, the board did pass by motion to allocate the ten million dollars which were allowed by ARPA instead of trying to figure out the monthly basis for revenue. We could take this dollar amount, the board did decide to send that over to the authority at that point in time. Since that time, on December sixth of twenty-twenty-two, the board did take back the F F and E, which totaled nine hundred forty-one thousand, which then actually freed up the nine hundred forty-one thousand and the ten million as unallocated any part of the project. So with that said, we're proposing or suggesting, requesting, whatever, that nine forty-one be taken back from the authority's allocation of ten million and make that now nine million fifty-nine thousand. The nine hundred forty-one thousand, then it'll stay as ARPA funds. It adds a standard deduction which the board can use for anything except lobbying, debt service, uh, retirement funds, but it could be used for budget help next year. It could be used anyway as a standard deduction.
I would move to reduce the ten million standard deduction to nine million fifty-nine thousand, which will account for the transfer of funding F F and E in the amount of nine hundred forty-one thousand dollars.
Second.
This by Taylor. Second by Nelson.
Was some of this not delegated already? Or am I mistaken?
What?
Was some of this delegated to something in the project?
The nine hundred forty-one thousand? No.
Okay.
No. It's unallocated funds.
Okay. And then?
Now revert back now under the board's direction to be used anywhere they desire.
So any F F and E that we want to pursue though, is that then departmental?
Yes.
So like the attorney's office has any F F and E they need, they can use?
Yes, and I think Kenny does have a list and did provide that to the board, what they do need out of this nine forty-one. Anything above and beyond that, each department's gonna have to come back and request from the board.
But I wanna, I wanna be very clear on this item. And the reason I think that is the genesis for this item is that there was a motion by Taylor, second by Raddick, um, to approve the funding for F F and E at the new law enforcement center from F Y twenty-three C I P for nine hundred and forty-one thousand. Not doing this would say there's two hundred nine, two nine hundred forty-one thousand dollar amounts that are out there. And so what this is seeking to do is say, hey, we already covered that through a C I P. You correct me if I'm wrong on this, please and thank you on any of this.
Okay. The nine forty-one was coming from C I P contingent to an amendment of the lease. The amendment to the lease was done as amendment number one, which designated, does fall back to board. We did not borrow the nine forty-one in our C I P funds. Cause we moved it over, cause this was done December, we borrowed the money in May of this current year. So nine forty-one is not doubled up.
Right, and that's made clear by this motion, correct? Okay, so I just wanna make sure that we've already taken care of this F F and E over here, this nine forty-one. So we're de-appropriating or de-obligating here nine hundred forty-one, just as in another nine hundred forty-one thousand to spend wherever that's been freed up for the authority. That's kinda the overarching point.
And the nine forty-one is coming to our ARPA funds, not the standard deduction. That's actually the reports we've been submitting to the U S Treasury as a item project, the nine forty-one. It's allowable. So that does free up the nine forty-one out of the standard deduction. And we did not use any C I P funds or borrow C I P funds.
So there was a motion and was there a second?
Yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post saying aye, passes five zero. Item B is for information only. This is a discussion on the financial recap of the L E C project. Dennis?
Okay, I have included in our board packet there, the recap of where we're at as of August thirty-first. It could be as of today because everything's current as it stands today. So what I did, I broke it down, total resources, total expenditures and obligations. Then at the bottom, you'll see how much, uh, is actually still obligated to our three different major contracts. So if you want me to go through this real quick, for our revenues, we did pass a bond issue of fifty million three hundred thousand. We didn't have a bond premium, bond premium on our second issue of four million sixty thousand, four fourteen. The city did contribute three hundred seventy-five thousand, cause the bid increased more than what we originally had. Uh, Woodbury County site prep, we did transfer seven hundred seventeen thousand eight sixty-three over to the L E C that was put in the one bond issue fund. Uh, the ARPA standard deduction is now nine million fifty-nine thousand. I already deducted that nine forty-one, assuming this first part passed. And the ARPA for new facility projects, which we have already spent was four million two hundred thousand for a total of sixty-eight million seven hundred twelve thousand two hundred seventy-seven dollars revenue. Expenditures as of August thirty-first, for the last law enforcement center authority meeting, total of sixty-one million eight hundred eighty-four thousand three hundred and six dollars. That does include expenditure of Hosman plus?
Excuse me. Uh, could I ask you Karen to pull up this, uh, page on the monitor, please? Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, wait, take it's up. Well, Karen's pulling that up. Can I just make a comment or two?
Please.
One of the reasons I asked Dennis for this information publicly last meeting and then afterwards, um, also is because I think it's very important as we talk about absolute transparency, that's a Sioux City Journal called for recently, to keep track of how much money is left so that we do not exceed the fifty-point-three million dollar bond referendum. Voters voted for it. It can't be fifty-point-four, it can't be fifty-point-three plus a dollar. And so I asked Dennis, all sources of revenue, all sources of funding, minus all expenditures and contractual obligations and what's promised out there, what is the running total of what the L E C authority can spend at this point? And so from here on out, every L E C authority meeting, I would like to have a report back from Dennis to say, here's the change orders, obligations and keep a running total. Not to play any sort of gotcha, just to have the transparency that we desire and deserve as a board to know what is the funding that's left and where do we have to say, there is no more funding and make no more transfers.
So now it is on the board, uh, screen there. Our expenditures as of August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three is sixty-one million eight eighty-four, three oh six. That includes payments to Hosman, Baker Group, Goldberg and any other items that would be attributed back to these funds. Contractual obligations still do are six million one hundred forty thousand, eight hundred forty-nine dollars. What I did, I did break that down to bottom. Hosman contract with the change order is still six million seventeen thousand eight thirty-nine. Goldberg's ninety-seven thousand, ten dollars and Baker Group is twenty-six thousand. With that said, taking the sixty-eight minus the sixty-eight oh twenty-five, and we did take the nine forty-one back off, there's funds available for completion of the project, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, hundred and twenty-two dollars after obligations. That's six eighty-seven, I would assume would cover, um, contingencies. So that's basically what they got left to spend.
Can your starting point, please and thank you, from here on out be six eight seven one two two?
Yep.
Okay, so as of September fifth and then each, each time, just so we're kinda keeping track.
Cause there's change orders, that'd probably show up on the six eighty-seven because part of the contract, I'd be reducing what the general obligation still do as we move up to expenditure side.
And I would ask the chair, if I may, for a ruling. I, I would like to bring up an item informationally as a concern that I think, um, needs to be de-obligated from this amount as well. Whether that's appropriate or whether you want me to wait till board concerns, I'll, I'll ask for you to say.
Is it related to these, uh, numbers as far as they cost? Then go ahead.
So in the original contract, and I have this here, um, under four-point-three in the A I A two, twenty-seventeen document, uh, which is, uh, the contract between the authority and Housman Construction, it says allowances included in the contract, some for a maintenance building, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We heard, um, that there was a desire among several different entities or individuals within the county or maybe the authority itself to exceed that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go to two-point-five, three million dollars to move all the building services, individuals and personnel out there. Um, my concern, and I think that may have been shared and publicly, um, among these board members was that that would exceed a bond issue in and of itself. And this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was to put up, uh, a low, um, uh, low maintenance, maintenance building, for lack of a better term, that's gonna house equipment, uh, mowers, snow removal and so on. This board sent a signal to the L E C authority that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what taxpayers, um, as part of the bond issue in the contract had put in as an allowance. And I contacted Shane Albrecht from the Baker Group today to find out they're not gonna do it at all. And the response was if we're not gonna do it long-term, we're not gonna do it. Well, I don't know who the we is, first of all. I don't know if a motion was made by the L E C authority, second of all. And third, um, it's gonna cause duress on our county employees to have to move equipment, and I talked to Kenny Schmitz about this, to move equipment from three or four miles away over there simply because they decided not to do it. Now, I'm an English teacher and a chaplain, I'm not a smart man as far as construction, but two hundred and fifty thousand dollars may not have heated floors, may not have offices with bathrooms and, and so on in there. Um, but I would think for a quarter of a million dollars, um, that ought to be able to be done. And I, I have a very fair take on this. If it's not going to be done, then this board ought to de-obligate the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Says it's an allowance for that. And to those who would respond with, well, can't do that, cause it says it's in the contract, it's in the contract for a maintenance building. Um, so either that maintenance building gets done at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and you value engineer it and you allow the county to keep some mowers and snow removal equipment out there, um, but it's not within their authority to say how they're gonna spend it. So I know that's not for debate or deliberation tonight, it's just informationally, I'm just sharing that I think that this board needs to look at that. If it's not gonna be fulfilled, then it's not gonna be paid for.
To the best of my recollection, I do not believe that the authority has passed such a motion at any of their prior meetings to not build that building. So if that's the route they're gonna go, it has not been voted on publicly.
Yeah, it just causes me concern when the project manager says, we're not doing it.
They do have an L E C meeting next Tuesday, so there'll probably be claims, so this will be updated for the, I'll try to update it even that night for an informational item, update of whatever they do Tuesday.
One, uh, one classic and unending debate about the L E C project has been that, uh, money is fungible. So if it is not per se that exact two fifty, the county can still de-obligate an additional two fifty in the following meeting, uh, from the standard allowance, for example. Because money is fungible. Any other updates, Dennis?
Nope, not at this point.
Any other thoughts from the board? Questions for Dennis or a financial perspective, anything else we want him to provide after authority meetings?
You're planning on attending all the authority meetings?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Move on to item nine. This is from Emergency Services, Director Scott Mitchell for Action. This is approval to add a, a point zero-five full-time employee paramedic to the EMS budget.
Scott Mitchell, Scott Mitchell, Director of Woodbury County Emergency Services.
Melissa Thomas, Human Resources Director.
She can better explain what this is so you understand it better. So when we, in the past, in the last year and a half, when we've been a short paramedics, we've hired six part-time paramedics. We have them at an F T E of point zero-five. So right now, you guys approved today hiring a full-time paramedic. So we need that point zero-five of the F T E to be able to maintain the six part-time paramedics we have. We can't get rid of any of them yet, cause we're not sure if this full-time person's gonna work out. So that's, you know, to make it all right with Michelle and with Melissa, this is kinda, yeah, what we have, what we have, what I have to ask for.
Correct. So also in the agenda item, then we put the amount that would be, um, the budget would increase by, which was, you know, forty-two hundred dollars approximately. I think this is a really good step to getting him fully staffed and then hopefully, uh, you know, with that paramedic, um, taking some part-time hours, actually it's not gonna just be a wash, I believe.
It should offset each other in the end and be a wash.
Yeah.
So I have a couple of questions, the offset, yeah, that's a good question. All right, so it's forty-two hundred, you're gonna make one of the six, Scott, one of the six that's on the, you currently have part-time, they're gonna become full-time, you're saying?
No, just one, the one that you approved today would be full-time, them six would stay as part-time employees.
Okay.
Dan, that would be a brand-new employee coming on full-time.
Yes.
Okay, so the forty-two hundred, so, so overtime last year, we had twenty-six thousand seven eighty-four. So we're gonna deduct overtime by four thousand, is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
We deduct overtime more than that, I would hope, because we're not, because see, we're, we're getting rid of, we're using some less part-timers and then your full-time, the two full-time paramedics you have now won't be working thirty-six or four, or double shifts.
Okay.
In, in the, in the twenty-eight day span.
Right.
Cause right now you'll have, say, a paramedic that might work an extra shift or two in the twenty-eight days.
Right.
Well, that's twenty-four to forty-eight hours extra time.
Yeah.
Added in that cycle.
Right, so yeah, so budgeted, you have eighty-five hundred budgeted for overtime. It's a difference of eighteen thousand two, so that's a major concern, like level ten concern. Um, that has to be addressed, not if, but it has to be addressed.
Well, there's, the, the point is, 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 and I'm, I'm be blunt with you.
Oh, always be blunt, never lie.
Uh, you know, do you want not to cover the shifts or do you want to cover the shifts?
Well, that's, that's something, that's something to be considered.
Wanted to cover the shifts, so.
Right.
You know, it isn't like we're, we're abusing the time because we can track it, so it's pretty easy, but.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that's hopefully, well, that is the plan, having three full-time paramedics, that will come down.
Okay.
Once he is orientated and fully staffed.
Also, um, that department has been down a full-time FTE since last December.
Okay.
So over the last eight months, they've had to fill in that time.
Well, yeah, before, before I come, it was April, before I come, they were short one. We hired one in September, September, we hired and then we had another one leave in December, so. It hasn't really been long that we've had actually full, three full-time paramedics.
Cause I think one of the discussions, the pri- the board and you and us that have is, is what are we gonna cover? Are we gonna do sixteen-seven, twenty-four-seven, twenty-seven because total hours for fiscal year twenty-three plus overtime came to eighty-two hundred forty-six hours, three sixty-five times twenty-four coverage is eighty-seven sixty. So we're still not even reaching full three sixty-five, twenty-four coverage, and so that's something I'd like to see addresses and kinda get us on a game plan to get overtime down to what's been budgeted and decide on what are we covering, you know, just so that we're not having massive overtime spending, you know, um, you know. So I understand, yeah, I understand what this proposal is today, it's just, um, it's just concerning, um, that much overtime, you know, so that's something I'd like to see, maybe we get together, you know, put something together and start having some conversations um, and get ready for budget season with that, so that's all I have, my questions.
And I, you know, another reason to be concerned about that is I know that, you know, when we have been down staff or staff have, have wanted to step back, it's been because they're burnt out and, um, you know, stretching to force coverage is, is also, hopefully not, but could be a recipe for something bad, so.
Melissa, how, what's your estimate on the, on the, um, on the amount of the save on overtime? Do you have any, just a general estimate? I mean, I know it's, and it's hard on the things that probably pin down, but.
Right, I, I do think it's gonna save quite a bit though, now that we have that other paramedic in, I think you're gonna see a dramatic decrease.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, cause you say you won't have your full, two full-time paramedics picking up an extra shift or two shifts in the cycle. That's, that's a big, that's a big uh, hit to that overtime.
That's all my questions.
Okay.
If I may, just since it was brought up about the coverage, um, I would in, highly encourage the board to continue the twenty-four-seven coverage of having a paramedic out there. I'm not in the medical field, I'm, I, I understand there's a difference between an EMT and the advanced paramedics and what they can do and, and if you're living in Anthon or outside Mowville or uh, climbing hill or wherever it might be, having that paramedic get there really is the difference between life and death. Um, and, and for our staff, being out there twenty-four-seven, if something were to happen to one of them, I mean, they have absolute full confidence in what, in what these people provide for that service out there. So I know this isn't the night for it, but I just, since it was brought up, I just wanna say that, you know, I, I would imagine Mark has a better uh, pulse on what the rural folks would say, but from the sheriff's office perspective, um, you know, I would, it, when that conversation is had, to encourage you to, you know, continue that twenty-four-seven coverage, cause it, it is vitally important when you're out there a long ways away from a hospital, they can do so much more that's really going to save somebody's life. So I would just encourage you to really consider it and, and, and encourage you to keep that twenty-four-seven.
Thank you. Dennis, if we do this tonight, is, is there a source of funds or budget amendment, game or something?
Utter reserved to say how it'll turn out till about April, to see if the overtime actually goes down, because any over eighty-five hundred, if they spend all their wages, they'll take more money. And that's, I, it's a wait-and-see game. I don't wanna call it a game, but it's a wait-and-see.
Oh yeah. I'd, I'd move them for the increase of the EMS budget by point zero five FTE.
Second motion by Taylor, hearing no other discussion. Alls in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay, passes five zero, thank you. We already did item eleven, item twelve is citizen concerns for anything not already addressed on the agenda. Are there any citizen concerns? Please keep time for three minutes.
Ernie Colt, forty-five, twenty-six, Perry Way. Just to clarify some things, the quality assurance questionnaire is still in effect on that project. And it says you can pre- report to the county engineer. So any information you want, you'd think you'd be able to get from Kenny because of the quality assurance questionnaire. And we wanted to do the right thing with this project and that's why we introduced the quality assurance questionnaire, to be able to vet the contractor, right? There's subcontractors on this project that aren't paying people. I've got the reports here, we've sent letters to subcontractors that you don't even know are on the job. They're not getting paid. It's not a federal prison, it's not a security thing. I walked right in the front door, I'm taking video, I'm taking audio of a room where they've been peeing in, everybody's peeing in this room, okay? They're standing on buckets, it's unsafe, they've had panels fall, they're over budget, you don't know when it's done, I'm not a liar, I was telling the truth. I was telling the truth, I was trying to help you and now you're in this situation and you wonder why. I was trying to help. Thank you.
Any other citizen concerns? Hearing none, item thirteen, any board concerns? Hearing none.